Embarrassed. And I'm like how the hell did that can get in?
Forward, forward, forward.
Exactly, yeah. So she's there's a button underneath the this the seat for her to control it and then me I've gotta do it on the touch screen.
Oh.
And so it's not that easy and plus I'm holding in the collection of traffic and I don't I can't really do it.
Right. Yeah. Right.
So so she was the one who found it. But uh but it was on a soundtrack that was that I had uh I had saved. I hadn't edited that, so I had to go through pull that out.
Oh. Yep.
I was horrified.
You know what? I can't Oh my God. Ethicopa. That's wicked funny. Barry. Barry Manilow. Was in chorus when he was in junior high and high school. We had like one of our chorus concerts was all Barry Manilow songs. Wow. But I mean that was in the seventies, so he was popular then. Not my cup of tea, but.
Yeah.
That's funny.
Was there uh was there anything on page six?
Uh no, it was just signatures.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or something. Why didn't page six print out?
Looks like it's five o'clock.
Cool.
Let the phone begin. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Good evening. Is that working? Cool. Thanks for coming on. Looks like we have a an abbreviated not abbreviated but a short agenda today and we'll look to keep it that way um if we can help ourselves. So Debbie, that's all roundtable stuff.
Yep. Yeah.
What you got?
Um so I sent you guys all of the um applications we had for the um cleaning hoping you guys looked at some of them informed some kind of opinion. Um I gave you my opinion whether you asked for it or not. Um most of them were um just single persons and then there was one that was a company but they had a reasonable um cost and they're going to do one or two deep cleanings once a year for additional money and it really wasn't that much more than what we had um anticipated.
Yeah.
Um they're local, they're veteran owned. That that was my opinion on I mean I thought they and they've also done work in governmental buildings so they were you know like background checks wouldn't be an issue. They've worked at Hanskema Fos Base and other high security places so.
Yeah.
I felt like they would be a great choice but it's not up to me so. Have at it guys.
That comes down to money. Money, my money.
Yeah.
Trying to find things. Lou, did you do you have any opinions on that cleaning quotes?
I liked the whole idea that she presented in her email about leaving the selection to her.
In the what?
Leave it up to me. Did you did you look at any of them?
I looked at all of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
And to be honest, I agreed with you.
I just feel like they're it that's what they do. It's not just a I wanna come here after school and you know or because we've had people in the past that didn't do a great job or rushed through it or whatever and we need more than that so um I just figured we're there. That's what they do. It would be a better thing to have and they weren't I mean we already discussed that fifty dollars for each place once a week isn't enough anyway so we were gonna have to step up our game a little.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah. No, it's definitely you know something 'cause um I like the idea having like that service.
Yeah.
But i- it's more expensive than what we have now, right?
Yeah, well we only budgeted for fifty dollars for this building and fifty dollars for that building a week so.
Yeah, so a hundred. Yeah.
Even the people who the single people applying
Yeah.
were not gonna do it for that so.
Alright. So it's this will be more for budget numbers for next year then?
Yeah um yeah 'cause I was gonna t if whoever we pick I was gonna see what we can work out for the remainder of this year.
Mm-hmm.
And um with the understanding that January first or well March after the March election pending the budget passing you know it would be you know whatever we budget for.
Yeah.
I know if it if it's default then we're still stuck with what we had this year.
So.
We were we were doing one cleaning a week.
Correct. We need one cleaning a week.
Not every two weeks.
I mean I I've kinda run that by everybody 'cause you had said maybe once a month or whatever and they're like
Oh no, that was just to get through this year. I wasn't saying forever.
Yeah, to get through it, right. Yeah.
Mm.
Um I mean it depends on I think it depends on how many meetings we have a week 'cause that's a lot of foot traffic.
Hmm.
Um like some some weeks it's selectmen assessors planning all in the same week and um and zoning like the first week of every month that has the first Monday, the first Tuesday, the first Wednesday plus F A C.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? So plus it's the board members and then it's also you know applicants and whatever trips and through so.
Hmm.
Have you talked to the P D how often?
Um we did talk about that before but I don't know. I don't remember what was said. I mean we can at least for the rest of this year try to if we wanted to pick one of them that into the every other week maybe and then we'll just fill in in between. Carleen's been stepping up, Lisa's been cleaning the bathroom, Mindy's been doing stuff so like everybody's kinda trying to just pitch in and help out while we don't have anybody. But.
Yeah, 'cause it's pretty much like from that um company without increasing the budget it would be biweekly and one spring deep cleaning.
Yep.
That would keep the budget.
And that'd keep the budget.
Yeah.
Mm.
Yeah.
So that would be worst case scenario.
Now of these individuals are any of them um like running a cleaning business?
No. They just do it. They do some places um.
Were they anticipating being
That one didn't.
on payroll or is that?
Yes. Uh well I'm assuming. I don't know. I didn't really we didn't discuss that really.
How did we handle it before? It does look like
Well it was always payroll.
It was on the payroll?
Yeah.
'Cause that's a whole much thing 'cause then we have even though they're part time we don't really want benefits with but we have all the FICA and Medicaid where with the subcontract that we don't.
Yeah, 'cause it's an employee. No. Yeah. Yeah. True. Yep. Yeah, none of them have the one of one of them is cleaning at one place and that's it.
And then uh with the cleaning supplies we also have that out like in order to keep the budget and do the biweekly and the the deep clean we'd have to provide all the cleaning supplies which we do anyway we do it. Yeah, yeah.
Which we do we do anyway, yeah. Yep.
So.
Yeah, that was my thought too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do that anyway. I don't know where that I think that's G G B.
Budget.
Cleaning supplies 'cause that's where we order it from.
Alright.
Yep.
And with that being said seems like if we did start doing it biweekly they could even start sooner, right?
Yeah, they could do it now.
Yeah.
'Cause we had a few weeks that we weren't even paying anyone.
Yeah.
We're paying whoever's doing it now but
Right now, yeah. Carleen's been doing it um for the past three weeks. Carrie's gonna do it this week.
Yeah, good.
And they're just doing here, they're not doing the P D.
Yeah.
So P D is now without cleaning.
So I don't know what yeah. I don't know if might if they're just doing their own thing over there or excuse me.
Yeah. So uh it's encouraging to see that something came within line 'cause what we'd seen previously was
Mm.
way out of whack compared to like what our budget was. Yeah.
Oh I know. Oh yeah.
And we've tried several times with individuals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And hit or miss.
Yeah, exactly.
And then they're it's not a top priority
Right.
Mm-hmm.
um in their life, you know, it wouldn't take much to say I can't do it.
Right. Right.
I feel like if it was me anyways
Yeah.
I shouldn't speak for these people who applied.
Yeah.
But but to try a cleaning company.
Yeah, it sounds like this one's used to being fully vetted so even that other company that had trouble
Yeah.
Mm we tried from first.
Yeah, with trying to get all the that paperwork done like this one doesn't sound like it'll be an issue at all 'cause they are familiar with the process.
Right. Yep.
So.
And they're not a huge company that you know every week somebody different would be coming or you know what I mean? They're small enough that it's the same people all the time.
Yeah.
And they gave us a hometown discount.
Mm-hmm. Gonna try and give them a give them a shot.
Yeah, how does this con is this a contract for 'cause I wonder if they'd be willing to work with our budget year.
Yeah.
Like if we'd be able to say we'd like to try it at biweekly and if that's not cutting it 'cause this is our busiest time of year.
Right, oh I know.
If it's barely cutting it then I think we'd be good for the rest of the year.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
But if it's like oh then we'd know
Yeah.
Yeah.
as we're working through the budget season.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Jeez, what two months that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you gonna be able to do this, Joe? Two months? Put together our budget?
Yeah, we'll be done in two months, absolutely.
Awesome.
Certainly will sit down.
I thought no, that would be my thought on it.
Yeah.
Is to get on going on the biweekly. And then assess and adjust.
Mm-hmm.
If we can trim enough off the rest of the budget. And we'll be getting feedback from the office if this isn't working or
Do we basically go from now up until the end of April?
In the uh middle of March.
Yeah, and then you put or
Once once the once the voting does is done whether if the budget passes then we would be able to do what we wanna do.
Yeah, however it goes.
Wanna do.
If not, we'll have to keep it on biweekly.
What would be ideal is is a monthly payment and no contract like okay now we have to re-meet and
Yeah. Right.
it'd be nice if they could work that way. I don't know if they would.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do you agree so that we could just call them and say hey I'm gonna switch? Do you think they would reading this or I don't see it.
Yeah, I don't know. Didn't see anything. It's just a quote so not the terms aren't listed necessarily except for just all the pricing so.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think.
I've already checked what I thought.
Make a motion to engage WaPAC Industries um to finalize uh contract terms or payment agreements uh based upon the quote provided on September nine. And the options we're looking at is the half option four half year service um with a oh wait no, not option number four, sorry. I amend that. Option five half year service and half year deep cleaning. So that'd be twenty six biweekly cleanings and a spring deep cleaning. And then as far as uh su uh cleaning supplies, option three, which means that we would provide all the c cleaning supplies necessary to do the job.
So you want me to um s is this oh sorry, you gotta second it. Somebody can write and then we can discuss.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Where you second it.
Any discussion?
Um am I I'm going to ask them if they can do biweekly for now?
Yeah, see when they could start like like um their services.
Okay.
And then not enter into a contract. Necessarily, we'll just uh do monthly billings.
But biweekly.
Mm-hmm. Biweekly cleanings, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, all those in favor? Alright.
Awesome. I will make all those phone calls tomorrow. Or emails.
What was the name of the company again?
WaPAC Industries. WaPAC.
Yeah, WaPAC Industries.
Okay. Excuse me.
Uh next up we had a received a letter from uh Ms. Montague in regards to our discussions on reclassifying Nimi Road. We have that in our packets in front of us.
Yeah, I've already got it.
Um so in addition to her letter I spoke to her and asked her about um the like public use of her conservation land and she said this part here is a very small portion of Nimi Road that is in conservation. The whole rest of the road is on her property. Um and she said whatever the Piscataquag conservation allows then she she will allow as far as hunting, you know, hike, trail hiking, whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
Um and she uses the property all the time and she doesn't live there but she uses it all the time and so does her family and it's in as a classified road. It's in disrepair as it is. And she would be very upset and against um us reclassifying it to a class six 'cause she relies on that for access. Um she has fam as you can see in her letter she has family come visit and whatever. So she's humbly asking if we can not do that, just leave it as a class five and I told her that I would bring it up at the road committee meeting in mid October to see if we can get some kind of something going on on that on as far as making it more passable if it you know whatever depending on what you guys decide.
Yeah, the road committee is fully an advisory committee. It's right here but uh
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
when I look at the map
Yeah.
I do I feel the pain of her but it really it's a driveway.
Yeah, it's almost once that like that road hits her property line. Yeah, it it is. It's just a single ser like s service to that one lot. So it's it's a driveway.
And I don't know if it's fair to ask the taxpayers to continue maintaining all that they have for the last how long?
Forty something years?
Fifty nine years.
Fifty years, yep.
Yeah.
And at the same time I'm like just feels like there's something wrong about pulling the rug out from someone like that. You know what I mean?
And and like she said too and she's like that just
Like changing the status up there.
Right.
Yeah.
That doesn't feel quite right either but.
Oh. Yeah. The only reason it came up was the change in status of the property too. Yeah, and then just a reassessment of hey
Yeah, it it
this is what that is. You're such as longest town maintained driveway. Yeah, has been spoken about before. Um.
And she also said, you know, I gave her almost a hundred and one acres to the town basically to keep it in conservation so no one can no one can subdivide or build on it or whatever.
And not to the town. Yeah. It was given to Was given to the Piscataquag nature conservatory.
Well, they're just an easement.
And a very limited public access.
Well, she said the access is at the very beginning of Nimi Road where it that she she said it's not a very big section.
Hmm.
But yeah, that part. And that's where the public can access any tru she said like her neighbors will ask if they can go on the property. She never says no.
Mm-hmm.
Um if anybody wanted to ask her if they could hunt hunt or hike or whatever as long as Piscataquag Conservancy okay's it then she's fine with it.
So I wonder if this conservancy would be willing to pick up the maintenance of the road.
Huh.
What is the five B twelve exclusion area?
That's that's her house lot.
That's your house?
So this whole thing is her property.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
But the dark border is the conservancy so that
Gotcha.
five B twelve part is um where her her what she still owns without conservancy on it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
I wonder how many acres each is.
And the and that the there was a comment there about um
I don't know.
the little nodule between five B three C and five three five B three B. Um is that part of her house lot also?
So this is um basically our base map. So the the conservancy area has the correct um longitudes, latitudes on it.
Okay.
But it's put onto our base map which is not correct. So it looks like it goes onto other people's property but it doesn't.
Okay.
It's all her property. Someday we'll get there with a good base map.
You think?
I'm hoping. I tried for a few years but
It's just getting more expensive over here.
Oh yeah. It was a hundred and forty five thousand when I started and now it's over two hundred.
Yep.
It's weird. You figure the technology prices will go down. But uh that doesn't happen.
Well now people have to get more and I would go do it. All the research and
It's kind of A I.
A I. Right.
More and more expensive for people to do less and less and less. Um yeah, I think it certainly warrants having the public hearing and you know putting it out to the community.
I I think so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And having the discussion and seeing if we would like to move forward or not with it.
Uh yeah like what we brought up before, I'd like to see what the terms of the conservancy are and let the people know.
We have a copy of it.
Yep.
Yeah, it's in your email somewhere. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Drop point and when you came here you explained it. Yeah.
And it's in the Dropbox too.
Oh, it's in that Dropbox folder.
Uh it um not for tonight but it was in something else. But in that main selectmen one that you guys have all access to I hope I know.
Mm-hmm.
Um it's in there somewhere.
Okay.
So when will we have a public hearing?
Do you wanna review that? Are you saying you wanna review that agreement before deciding whether or not to have a public hearing or?
No, not a public hearing. I just want to how with the agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
I can reemail it to you.
Alright, then uh what's the notice requirements for the public hearing, Debbie?
Uh ten days.
Want to make it coincident with our next meeting?
So we'd put it on the website, we'd put it on Facebook and we'd also put an ad in the ledger.
Yeah.
And I'll let her know too. I told her all the letter.
We're two meetings down the road.
Let's see. I guess all these dates are
Whoop.
Yeah, warrant article.
Well, there's one. Yeah, it's uh the next page.
But that just like ours is just with the budget so it's not in yeah, so it's not into until into January, right? Yeah.
Petition warrant article because Yeah. Yeah.
Um which one of these is free? I wanna do a thirty day free trial but is that one free?
That's your current plan. Yeah, that's free.
Won't let me go on that.
Yeah.
I will not be here October first that week. I will be incommunicado.
Alright.
No email, phone, text, nothing.
Cut it out. No.
Not that that matters but
Alright, October eighth.
I'll post it um next week. Well, I can email them the paper. Do you wanna put it in two papers or one? I can put it on the first and the third. Put it in two days.
Maybe the first and the third. Maybe in the first and the third.
October first and October third, put it in the newspaper.
For the eighth?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not ten days.
No.
I was thinking, I mean we can notice it but then it has to be
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll I'll put it in.
Maybe go longer too, like you're gonna do the fifteenth.
Are we are we planning on putting it on a war- as a warrant depending on the uh outcome of the public hearing?
Correct, yeah.
Should we not?
Can't we just do it with a public hearing?
No, not with this, like it's a public hearing and then um we can put it up, choose to put it on the warrant or not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
Yeah. Right?
Where's the I don't I don't
We can't just do it based off the public hearing, like the select board can't do that, I thought I had to go to town vote.
To group reclassify, I don't
Thought this way it could
I've given you guys this paperwork so many times and they didn't print it all out tonight, um
Predator, that's what I I came down because I thought it could be a public hearing.
I don't think
I wouldn't be comfortable
I thought I thought if you did the public hearing you'd and then you didn't have to do a warrant.
I wouldn't be comfortable doing that. I mean, I guess I kind of could but I think it should be put to vote.
Yeah.
It's the people in town can look at it and say
That's what you do with a public hearing.
But not really, I mean in theory but nobody comes, that's the problem but if they're there voting
Cause nobody shows up.
The ones who care about it will come.
In large. Exactly.
So nobody cares about the budget, nobody cares about the deliberative, nobody cares.
They're all public hearings.
I know, you know? Kinda stinks. Cause I feel like well See, look at me zipping.
Uh I'm pretty sure it's the public hearing and then warrant but if it's not that way cause
Yeah, I can't remember.
Look, we can put
But that's one of the is one of those int- instances where it needed more than just a public hearing, but you needed to have the public hearing
You could do anything, yeah. Right.
to put it onto the warrant.
Right.
Yeah.
We can make a decision here, either way it had to have
Warrant maybe just We had to have a public hearing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So What did
Fifteenth October? Lou?
Yep.
Jason? Mm-hmm.
Sorry, and then I'll post it, I'll put it in the paper for the first and the third. Cause that's
Yeah.
That's the ten, that is more than ten days.
Yeah.
What time?
Uh seven. I'll make a motion to hold a public hearing uh regarding the reclassification of Nimi Road um on October fifteenth at seven P M at the town office. Uh select board main meeting room.
I'll reconit.
Is there in favor?
Aye.
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 What time was it? Eight P M?
Seven.
Seven P M.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Alright. Um they had talked about, Peter's come in a couple times about renaming the old East Old Country Road or whatever. Um so I found the R S A two thirty-one, one thirty-three that says the governing body may change the name of any such street or highway at any time when it's when in its judgment there is occasion for doing so. Um the nine one one obviously had an issue with it so it that that is a good reason to change the name of the road so we would have to classify which part you know, from Turnpike Road to wherever we wanna end it, which would probably be the impassable part, I would guess, so we would have to
So my first uh first question is how who's defined as the governing body in this R S A?
The governing body is
Yeah.
Selectmen.
Yeah, we're the governing body and then the community members are legislative body.
The borough is a
Oh, that's how it's all throughout all the R S As.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So what do we need? Coordin- coordinates? If we go on that map right there and draw a line and say this is where it starts.
Yeah, it could be could probably
Right.
Yeah, I can call the D O T and find out how what I mean they might be able to take their measuring stick and walk it out to say what length because from the state I have all the measurements
Yeah.
of sec- sections and segments of roads so I can see where a good breaking point would be maybe and just change it that way.
Really, like it's if there is a point, like a break point in that road really, you know, like we're just impassable, you know?
Right.
So I haven't been up there in a long time but I feel like it was just you kinda get up to the top and that's about it, like and if you made it to the top, you're lucky, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. About it.
Yeah. Right.
Hmm.
So that's the one that goes from River Road past the country club. Is that that road?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it ends up at Miss Gophers.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so like you had said though it may be wise to have our highway department just take like a like a walk right up it and we can go to specific foot like increments, yeah.
It's just Yeah. Yeah, so many feet, yeah.
And and just name this portion
Right.
east Old Country Road to where the the last
Right. And it's weird because it is east Old Country Country Road on
uh triangle
is it just in Google?
Yeah, there's something he's
From where? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
And he's got his whiteboard on in his office and all the ditches and whatever and then on top of it his rename he's still
So measured to impassable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Sitting on his whiteboard.
Right, so we'll have the D P W do that and I mean if you wanna
I think we could we motion it without knowing?
To whatever, to the impassable portion?
I think and then authorize
Yeah.
Peter in conjunction with um I don't know Wendy or what was she got to
Yeah.
Well, I think it'd be better like I don't know the sense in doing that cause the work's gotta be done after anyways and I think it would be good to have you know, Peter come in and you know state
Talk about it?
Yeah, like the footage is and
Say exactly how many feet it is, okay.
And then make the motion.
And then make the motion so it's all done
All at once.
All at once and we make sure all the work's done, yeah, yeah, and nothing gets left.
Okay. Okay.
Potentially left behind.
I would agree, yeah.
Okay, do you wanna have a date for that? So it doesn't fall off the
Next week.
radar?
Yeah, well, it depends on yeah, how fast he can get it done so he can he can whenever he gets the work done, yeah.
Okay.
I think put it on the agenda.
Okay. And then the twenty-fourth is the um state reps. Okay, so there's a um the next thing is the Brownfield update and that is somewhat gibberish. Um but they are, you know, he said they've they've come up with the draft ransom has but the um S W R P C has not had a chance to review every you know, do whatever they do with it, so as soon as they do they'll get back to me and schedule a time to come in and give the select board and the town a whole overview of the whole thing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I hate to take assumptions like based off because there's no real direction in the first five pages of their summary, yeah.
So this is this is No, yeah. And the rest of it is just like test results and like maybe right, no sense, so this is the phase two part.
Yeah.
Um so I'll keep you posted when I hear anything.
Thank you.
Moving right along. Um choose dates for budget and deliberative, so I highlighted the first and last days.
Oh. And then this, don't um put this as a part of the minutes, this is cause it's only a draft form and we don't know what the final is gonna be, yeah.
Right. Okay. 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 It's gotta be that TV. So yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like a baby crying or something.
Yeah, before it sounded like Amazing Race on the back tires. Um yeah, so here's your N H M A important dates, I highlighted all the important stuff for us.
First one didn't seem like we had much of a choice at all.
Nope, last day to give notes.
Yeah.
Um so January fourteenth, last day for voters to petition the select board with a warrant article. Um January twenty-first is the last day to have the budget hearing. So
It's really our first day.
Huh?
It's kinda like, cause we meet on Tuesdays, so it's like all their daytime Tuesdays, so unless we wanted to have it on a Saturday, which we haven't done typically, we do that.
Yeah. Right.
You know, it'd be on the twenty-first essentially at seven P M.
Okay.
Unless we're, you know, we're gonna go out and decide to do it on the Saturday. Yeah, so let's take that date, we'd have no snow day, we'd have to come in unless the state declared a state of emergency.
Okay. Right. Right, so January twenty-first, seven P M?
Yeah, the town office.
Budget hearing.
What day in January?
Twenty-first. Okay.
I'll make a motion to have the budget hearing on January twenty-first at the town office at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then um the deliberative, the first, the earliest you can have it is February first and the latest you can have it is February eighth.
Yeah.
Which both of those are Saturdays, did you wanna do it on Tuesday the fourth?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah, the fourth and then we'd have a snow day of the eighth.
Yeah.
Wait, having the budget hearing here at the town office?
Yeah, yeah. And then deliberative would be at Messinic.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to have to hold our deliberative session um February fourth at seven P M at the Messinic Regional High School Auditorium uh with a snow day of February eighth at twelve P M uh at the same location. All those in favor? Or is there second?
Aye. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 What time did you say for the snow date?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, twelve o'clock.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, and then we'll show everybody those. Our annual town vote, March eleventh, Tuesday, March eleventh, seven to seven, at Messinic Regional High School.
Huh? Yeah. So I'll fill out all those, we'll use forms tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um and I do have one more thing that I didn't put on the agenda. Um Wendy at the ambulance uh sent out an email today to Parks and Rec Fire Chief, Police Chief, et cetera about um doing a joint trick or treating um down at the field. Mindy said that was fine. Um they feel it's too dangerous to have it at the ambulance bay so
Oh, yeah.
they they were prefer
Cause it does, ain't a lot of cars to pilot.
and they didn't and they crossed across the street and too too much danger. So I just wanna let you know that's a thing, should be talking about that.
Okay.
Um I don't think the selectmen really need to do anything with that really.
I don't have any objections over it. Lou?
All four.
Yeah, Jason?
Safety wise, yeah.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Yep, I think so too.
I think, yeah, was it last year? It seemed like a lot of people were across the road.
Yeah, I thought they didn't do it last year.
Or the year before, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they were concerned about that.
Oh, why? I guess it's bad enough on there.
Or S V A S did not do trick or treating last year due to concerns of the children crossing Turnpike Road
Mm-hmm.
and the way people drive passed our day.
Mm-hmm.
They've had they've put out phones and blinking lights, yeah, they put out phones and everything and people just run them over.
But it's too bad cause they usually do a pretty good job, yeah. Yeah.
So thankfully it wasn't a kid.
Alright, Jason, do you have anything for us this this evening?
Um no, other than it's Constitution Day.
It is?
Two hundred and thirty, what would it be, seventeen eighty-seven? Who's the math man here?
Kids, not me.
I thought the constitution was um
Well, this was when they had the convention.
Seventeen ninety-one.
Seventeen seventy-six.
Seventeen eighty-seven they had the convention.
But the day was written, not the day it was approved.
Two hundred and thirty-eight. Little bit young compared to our town but
Yeah. Really, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna do one of those books, did you want me to order them?
That's my
We I think we'd want
I can talk afterwards, I'm gonna show you a link.
Okay. Oh, okay, I like links.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
Lou, did you have anything?
I thought you said lakes, so we're gonna have these little kids or
Oh jeez.
What?
Crawling on the desktop.
Oh, links. That'd be cute too.
Yeah, would.
Love it. Okay.
Joe, Lou, alright, Joe, do you have anything for us?
But other than that, no.
Yeah, just a couple things from Monday's meeting, uh so I've had access to the B S N A system, I find it useful, I and I'm in there. Every time I'm working on something for the F A C, I talked about access for the other people, uh Bruce would like to have access and I think it's a great idea, just read only access.
Okay. Yep.
So I think that'd be helpful.
Anyone else?
At this point, no.
Okay.
Last couple years we've had kickoff meetings with the department heads and although they were so informative, the people that come to those meetings are typically the people that don't need it and the people that we would like to talk to haven't been coming to those meetings, so I'm not sure the value of having another kickoff. Uh but Debbie, maybe if you have a staff meeting that you want me to talk to for a few minutes, maybe that'd be better than just having a dedicated meeting for kickoff.
Hmm.
I like that, okay.
Yeah, so let me know when you'd like me to come in, I can just give a quick rundown.
Alright.
Just don't tell everybody else like um it's like financial meeting, not it.
We're doing um a staff meeting on the twenty-fifth. Normally we would do it tomorrow but I have to go to court so we're not gonna do it.
Okay.
So the next staff meeting is gonna be the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, excellent.
Okay.
And then uh there was some training that we're probably not gonna take out the, what's that?
At ten, oh, right. Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock. Excellent. Uh yeah, there was some N H M A training that we're probably not gonna attend. Bruce expressed a little bit of interest in attending the second one, I'm not available, he's not available that afternoon so we're probably not going to.
Okay.
But they did say uh people who attend will get electronic copies of the twenty twenty-four Basic Law of Budgeting
Yep.
for towns, can we get that?
Um we can order that book by itself or the webinar, the ebook, the e version.
I think I think, yeah, we should we should do that, if if it's not too expensive, let's get a copy.
Yeah, I I have older ones
Oh, oh.
that we've gotten, yeah, and we all went to that thing, was it last year or two years ago, I can't remember.
Good point.
Two years ago, yeah.
Time flies when you have fun.
Mm-hmm.
Um alright, uh what is it, law of?
Uh the twenty twenty-four Basic Law of Budgeting.
Okay. You want it in paper or E?
I think electronic is fine.
Okay. Okay.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Hmm, again, thank you.
I know, thank you
Yeah. Yeah.
for all you do.
Then, the only thing I had was kinda something that we touched on periodically and nothing ever comes of it, the perambulation. Cause we're uh last week out at one of the, you know, town lines and then today I found myself at another town line.
What year, which ones?
Just different segments of the town, um so off of one twenty-three and then Ashby Road, um
Oh, oh. Oh.
You know, I don't know the feasibility of this but yeah, you're supposed to walk the the boundaries
Yeah.
and I didn't know about the yeah, the feasibility of having, everybody wants a walking path too
Every ten years.
or bike path, if we did like a ten or twelve foot path all the way around the town.
Oh, that'd be fun to share in the swamp.
Well, that'd be fun, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, the port, the parts that we could, yeah.
Yeah. Get your kayak.
Alright.
There's some ambition for you.
Um so ed- years and years ago when I was doing Um so Ed years and years ago when I was doing land use Ed Rogers had suggested it would be a good um scope Eagle Scope project.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what project?
Eagle Scope.
Eagle Scope project.
It's also a potential um place where we could get revenue. I think if the other towns don't show up they owe us one king's shilling or something like that.
Yeah.
I know. I've been curious to find out when I I'm gonna I'll ask at the next uh T A meeting
You You know 'cause the thing is is we wouldn't have to take it all on ourselves.
If any of the other towns.
We could reach out to the abutting town
Mm-hmm.
and do it as a joint venture and because someone should really mark the way before we do this official perambulation 'cause it'll be quite the perambulation if there's no no one knows the path. I mean you've got woods.
Right.
Yeah, I think we're getting to some pretty interesting scenarios 'cause we
And I mean we're a big
being out uh by Temple where I was last week uh that property owner came right out and
Started.
Oh yeah. Yeah. So it's kinda like I don't know what type of notice you'd have to give but people aren't used to
No.
People.
people walking through their like the backs of the woods and the backs of their property. So, yeah.
Right.
Well it's it would be good to know even I mean even I was talking with the sergeant last summer.
Right. Yeah.
And he said over there by the dump go past the dump head towards Gridley that border there is
Sharon.
pretty disputable where some of them houses are 'cause it cuts across one twenty-four at such an oblique angle.
Really?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Huh.
Alright. Yeah, so we're just stay with that section.
Yeah, and I mean I can call the other towns.
Yeah.
All kinds of worms.
I mean only two of the other borders ever come to a um the T A meeting but uh I can I can call the T As of all the all those towns and just say have you ever had a perambulation done and say what'd you get?
Yeah. That northwest that northwest border is not marked.
Yeah, that Sharon Ridge corner. Okay.
Nobody knows where it is and not only is it a border of three towns it's also a
Middle of a swamp.
No, it also marks Cheshire and Hellsborough County.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
And there's no mark.
Somebody just knocked on something.
For the assessors.
Assessors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one uh I told you me and Wayne Moran went out there trying to find it in the works thinking there might be a pin or something but
Yeah.
but even to get the coordinates
Yeah.
when I started digging into it and looking at the maps in here and trying online it's tough. Tough to find coordinates.
Yeah.
Mm, yeah.
I think people are very afraid to put coordinates.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a touchy thing.
Uh Yeah. That is a good
Well and every every year I get an email or whatever from the state have have you have have your borders changed?
Really? Uh.
Like what? We gave another town some land or they gave us some?
Well it's almost the the point of checking your borders 'cause you don't know if you know other town has encroached in those undeveloped areas. You just you don't really know.
Yeah. Right. Somebody did a subdivision and what and and it.
Or a town D P W is using it for.
You could just answer yes and don't give them any of the D T.
Oh no, you have to. If you say yes there's all kinds of more stuff. Yeah.
Fine, drop. Get get a kid with a crayon to draw the new border.
'Cause I know you've heard like over in England it's real.
Oh yeah.
Like farmers will there's landmarks and then the farmers are like yeah I need a little more field.
But that's Mm-hmm. 'Cause that's what what stone walls were all about.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, stone walls are a little more difficult than wood.
Maybe uh need to do it officially so that it could be done maybe digitally somehow each year you know completed and verified. I don't know. So what the program would be. You and your drone.
Yeah. You can get a drone.
Would you need a
We can get a drone.
Would you need a surveyor to follow with you?
Yes. You need a surveyor. Make sure there's pins and meets and bounds and all that fun stuff. Longitudines, latitudes.
Yeah.
Or a lot of
The problem with the surveyor but the problem with doing this whole effort is the old maps were based on like the oak tree um so walk
Rudy, Chief, Fresh and Hurdy.
Some of it is.
Yeah.
follow the rock wall till you come to the oak tree and and then and then go northwest.
But the oak tree's gone. Yeah. Well, that's the problem with some of these deeds.
This is a couple hundred years ago. This is an out of view.
Yeah.
Like property deeds. You know there's one of them like you said go by the beautiful oak tree that's brilliant orange in the fall.
Yeah.
You know, it was written in eighteen twenty-two. That oak tree's dead.
Even modern even modern pins disintegrate. They'll put an iron pin on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, things were also based on chains and the chains were actually started from the middle of the road and that was a cart path at that point.
Depending on the soil.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Now that they've been widened over to handle two-way traffic.
Yeah. What about magnets? Is there some kind 'cause you there's gotta be.
That's what I'm saying. I'm talking ten twelve foot path all the way around. It's easily walkable. The people just do it every day. They wanna walk around the town.
I'm walking the the thirty-two's.
Yeah, walking the border.
I don't see that as feasible.
Yeah.
Oh, each property owner yeah could almost ask them if they could build their section.
Oh yeah, that's a great idea.
And then we give them like a fifty dollar discount on property taxes.
Yeah, something. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, there you go. Love it.
Yeah. Or free yeah copy of the Constitution or something.
We wouldn't have to do anything.
Yeah.
Technically speaking they shouldn't have any structures within twenty feet of the border, right?
There you go.
True.
Well, no, 'cause some of the properties overlap into the next town.
Yeah.
'Cause there's a lot of um towns I mean uh properties at the end of the um the bottom Mass oh cross over the Mass line that their properties actually extend so they pay a Mass tax bill and a New Hampshire tax bill. There's other ones in Sharon
Yeah.
that they pay Sharon and and I know this one's in Greenville as well. So that their property line doesn't end at the town boundary. It
Hmm.
Interesting.
Yeah, so that's all fun.
That's true. Yeah. So that's how fun it would be like walking through people's property essentially 'cause that is the case for where I was at today. It was
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
there's a big portion. You know most of it's in New Ipswich but then in Ashby too um for that property so
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. For our annual discussion about perambulation and
Yeah.
It would be great wouldn't it? It's the last time we did one.
Yeah.
I know. I know.
Long time ago.
I I had all the things. I looked them all up.
I wonder if C A I does that? The people who do our maps. I wonder if they do that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I don't know.
Just gotta get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
Again.
Second call?
How do we do it?
I don't know. That's well this is the start of the ball for this year. We'll see how far it rolls.
Well I'm Yeah. Right. I'll I'll ask the the other T As and see if anyone's had one done in the past thirty years.
Yeah.
They have 'cause when I was looking into it I printed off a bunch of them.
Oh really?
At least four or five in the last twenty.
Really? Oh, that border our town?
Not of our town. No, I'm saying
Huh, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying our without border. Oh, I'm saying that border our town.
I'm saying throughout the state. Yeah.
But, okay.
Mm.
And the people that I talked to said that whole interstate line has never never been
Mm.
perambulated. The other ones have been.
Yeah, I feel like I feel like Ed Ed had said something. Ed Rogers had said something about that, that corner.
Yeah. And the southern line somebody told me in my bringing it up to different people. I don't remember who it was but they're like they think Mass has encroached in Pinnewebpswich.
Oh, we need to boot them up.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, I almost said something political.
Debbie, who does our maps?
C A I Technologies.
C A I.
C A I. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mm. Second call? Lou?
Sure, what was it?
Second call? For extras. Debbie?
Good.
All set?
Good. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Love you.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night. Thank you Ron.